Call this meeting to order. All rights for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there any changes to the agenda?
There is not. Items nine, C, D, and E are under a closed meeting, just for your information.
And at that time, it will only be the council, say Administrator, and Tracy will be allowed in that meeting. Anything else? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So I'm going.
Home favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried. Open forum. If anybody would like to speak at the open forum. Okay. We are on to consent agenda, approval of the bills, minutes, purchase orders, investments, Stearns County Invoice Priority B Project, ambulance department bad debt, fire department bad debt accounts, resolution number 2022-62, designating polling place, Kingsmart tobacco license issue, few of the donations. One is resolution number 2022-61, a donation from Ron's Oil and Propane towards Melrose Police Department. Resolution number 2022-63, from Linda Wesley Braver and James Braver, an amount of $100 towards the Melrose Ambulance Department. Resolution number 2022-71, from the veterans of foreign wars, post 7050, for an amount of $9,747.73 to the Veterans Memorial. Resolution number 2022-72, donation from the Melrose Fire Relief Association, an amount of $1,800 towards the Melrose Fire Department for flashlights. Unless there's anything else, can I get a motion to approve?
So I'm going.
Home favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion is carried. It is 6:04. We are moving into a public hearing, a business subsidy to Riverside Development Group LLC.
Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 116-J point 993 through 116-J point 995, the city council of the city of Melrose will open a public hearing for the purpose of presentation of the business subsidy agreement for Riverside Development Group LLC. Ms. Ryan of Ryan Consulting, who is the city's economic development consultant, is here to present the details relative to the public hearing. So if you want to go up to the podium, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So the city council has reviewed the proposal, and we have been talking about the Riverside Development Group project on the former craft site for quite some time. I think we are about to push this thing over the finish line. The city council has looked at all of the agreements that are proposed for this project. They have already approved the purchase agreement for this project, but prior to executing the development agreement and deferred loan agreement, they constitute a business subsidy, and therefore, a public hearing is required. So for this project, again, the terms of assistance, the city is selling the property. That's at market value. It is not considered a business subsidy. The development agreement addresses providing the provision of tax increment financing, pay-as-you-go assistance, 90% of the increment over a 12-year period up to the point of eligible costs being met, plus interest rate of 7.5% interest is proposed for the assistance. There are no income restrictions on this project because this is a redevelopment TIF district. It was created a couple of years ago. The only, the start date is the one thing that is, has been kind of delayed as far as putting in a final completion date. We may still require a little bit of flexibility on that based on environmental findings and work that needs to be done yet. It's anticipated, correct me if I'm wrong, the developers in the audience, that we are shooting for a March start construction date, and for completion of construction to occur within approximately 12 months of the start. We are also providing, proposing to provide $643,000 of the fire remediation grant funds. Those were funds that were legislatively approved by the state of Minnesota as a result of the 400-block fire. This is one of the last remaining places. Those funds can be spent. Those will be provided in the form of a grant. In addition to that legislation, there was a sales tax exemption for, for the purchase of materials or things relating to the project. We can only estimate what that value is. That is something that the developer, as they, as they incur expenses, eligible expenses that are taxable, they will simply submit the tax exemption form directly to the state. So the city does not administer that. The city, one of the items that was added to the development agreement, just to cover everybody, was that should the project run into additional environmental concerns, you know, something found in the dirt, additional excavation, that the city will consider extending the term of TIF assistance to cover those expenses, but we will address those as they come up. Let's see. The project itself will be the construction of 29 units of multifamily housing, in addition to approximately 5,000 square feet of commercial space on the main floor, obviously located on the, on the former craft site. We are also proposing to reinvest the proceeds from the land sale into the project in the form of a deferred loan, whereas if all of the terms of the development agreement are met for the duration of the development agreement, that loan will be forgiven. And once again, due to, due to the level of assistance, the type of assistance, properly noticed, public hearing was required. That's a pretty quick overview. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Council?
Okay.
So the 270,000, that's the deferred loan. It's essentially the purchase price of the lot, basically giving it back to the developer.
Correct.
No.
All right. So we are, so we, if anybody has any questions out in the audience?
To open a public hearing.
Okay. Well, then at 6:10, we are opening the public hearing, to see if anybody would like to ask any questions. Okay. 6:11. All right. We're going to move forward, and we will take action in just a little bit. All right. Round of reports. Police Department Monthly Report.
Good evening. Our October 2022 numbers. In our traffic area, we had 18 citations, 49 verbal warnings, five written warnings. Written warnings are coming up now that we have some parking stuff going on, so we'll see probably more of those coming through in our reports in the future here. October 2022, we had 279 calls requests for service. Last year was 277, so a slight little bump there for us. We ended on ISR 2949, and last year was 3176. We're still behind last year's number, which is just fine for the most part. 24 agency assists, consistent with our normal numbers. Some areas to highlight with this last four days of snow, I don't know that Gary's crew's going to have enough sand and salt by the end of the season, but we only had one crash. Someone slid through an intersection and struck one of our power poles. Not too much damage to it, but Roger's aware of it. Other than that, we didn't have any within the city of several vehicles coming into each other unlike around us. So people have been slowing down, which we appreciate, take that extra time, bridge being open, whatever. All school traffic's been a little bit different. People are getting used to that again, but it's good to see. And like I said, we only had that one telephone pole that got bumped, and life has been good for us last couple of days, thankfully. Any questions?
I guess the only thing that I like that, as I hope people know when they see blue and red lights on the freeway, any road, please slow down, because firefighters, police officers, EMTs would like to go home to their families after a call. City Attorney Report?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. City Planner Report, Sheila.
Hello, Council and Mr. Mayor. You have my planning report, but just to give you a brief overview, I have some action items coming up, so I'll be back and I'll report on those as they come up. Some additional information regarding the Riverside Development since the last council meeting. We have been working with WSB on the environmental assessment worksheet. We have provided our comments and contributions, as did Mr. Goman for the project. Publication is going to be in the Environmental Quality Board Monitor volume. Publication deadline was Tuesday. It will officially be published next week. The 30-day comment period begins November 22nd. Will run to December 22nd. So this is going to be our time where we'll hear if there's any comments on the project. Was published in the Star Post, and it's also available on our website if anyone wants to see that. Design Tree has been busy working on the engineering and bid specs for the bathroom down in the park. I think we'll be able to finish that up within next week, and then we'll be able to go to bids on the bathroom in the park. If anyone saw, the roads to the campsites began getting put in today. So there's work down in the park to get the campsites ready and the road ready for next year. We finalized and submitted the Bernix Family Foundation Grant. We will hear in January on that one. Gary and I have been working with FEMA on some funds. The nicest thing I can say there is we're wading through, wading through bureaucracy, and that's what we can say about working with FEMA. We participated last week with the Finance Director, and some of us on staff met with Central Minnesota Housing Partnership to close out our Small Cities Grant that we had. Starting to think of some possibilities for 2023 in terms of applying for that again. Final item on my planning report, the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed rezoning of the property on Railroad, the Railroad West property for the multifamily project. One of the items we discussed was rezoning on whether to allow self-storage or mini-storage. And then we, they said no. We went back to MADA. It's been suggested by MADA that we have a joint meeting of MADA, Planning and Zoning, and Council to discuss more broadly some of the rezoning we need to do in town, what should some allowed uses be, what are some appropriate things to put in appropriate spots. So there'll be an upcoming meeting on that so that we can discuss some of that more broadly, because there's some comp plan stuff we should look at as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. City Engineer Report.
Good evening. I'd like to start by commending Sheila on referring to FEMA so justified, so nicely. Certainly are words she could have used otherwise. For me, it's been a fairly quiet month. We've been doing preliminary on the street project, was working with Railroad West, helped Sheila update an estimate on the trail application, which she's doing for grants. Otherwise, it's been fairly quiet on my end. You helped with the AW, answered a few questions, that kind of thing on the city's behalf, but otherwise, it's been pretty quiet for me. Otherwise, I have action items coming up as well.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. Economic Development Consultant Report.
Just a couple of things to talk about. You know, Sheila addressed the storage units. That came up at MADA as a result of, you know, whether or not that should be allowed in the industrial park and how that may potentially conflict with what Planning and Zoning is interested in. So it warranted a further discussion. In addition, you know, we're going, we're talking about, about the craft site development. Tonight, we'll be talking more about the Granite City Builders or Granite City Real Estate Partners project, so I won't get into details of that right now. The housing strategy progress. I thought it was interesting, you know, that's the city council, Planning Commission, I mean, all of the city organizations got together and approved the overall housing strategy about a year and a half ago, or closer to a year ago, actually. And I thought that it would be appropriate to just kind of take a look back at the outcomes that were recommended and that we were striving for when that strategy was approved, and what kind of progress we've made to date on that. Outcome number one was identifying the most cost-effective directions for land development, and I will abbreviate so as to not have this go on too long. In, in that regard, we have either accomplished or have in progress land acquisitions, the Tyler property, now we call Railroad Avenue West. We have a purchase agreement on the Midendorf property, and are hoping to make it across the finish line with that. And so as a result of some of the activity that's been going on, we're about to potentially see 29, you know, market rate units and another 72 multifamily housing units. Single-family is something we, we fully intend to pursue, but at this point, I think both of these multifamily projects will contribute towards our efforts in taking the next step with the single-family. The second outcome was considering the cost effectiveness, identify lots that can be development as, begin development as soon as possible, establish a timeline to do that. Again, we purchased property. We did have an option on the daylight court, or daylight court property, and it just financially, it was not financially feasible to continue. There are some issues with the buildable condition of the property in that area, the cost of improvements. Dave Blummel actually went out and got quotes for that, hoping that we could come in under that, what is the limit, 2?
175.
175, and the bids came in quite high. So we notified the, the person we had the option agreement with that, John Felling, that we would not pursue that. Again, at this point, we'll be looking more at the Tyler property, and hopefully, the Midendorf property, and continue looking at other options. Outcome three, again, tied to, you know, not just identifying it, deciding what it caught, or looking at what the expenses were associated with it, but securing those options. We made progress on that front. Outcome number four, determine the city policy, direction, and degree to which the city will support future housing. I think that to some extent, we made some progress on that when the city looked at its capital improvement plan. Within the last couple of months, we charted a course for how we could proceed with these projects, and while projects have not been finally bid, we don't know the, the end costs, we've got a path forward that we believe is financially feasible, so we will continue to move in that direction. The additional, additional, part two of the outcomes, outcome five, was identify developers and partners for all housing types. Again, we think we've been, have had some success working with Granite City, working with Riverside Development Group. We have continued to have conversations with folks who are interested in building single-family homes, but in this market, the economy, climate, it is, it is two steps forward and three steps back. I mean, nobody really knows where things are at, so we'll just continue to stay on that. And then again, outcome five was identifying financing approaches. We've got, we've received engineers' estimates. We've, we've looked at planning costs. The city council has authorized some of that work. So all in all, all of the six outcomes that have been identified, we've made measurable progress in all areas, and hope to keep going. This is just the beginning. So any questions about the housing strategy? All right. We're going to be talking a little bit more later on about the industrial park and industrial park lot prices. There is some business interest in a couple of lots, out me industrial park. And then the other item is the Nature Energy Update. You know, I think we have, MADA has talked about this. We've had presentations. A group of us have gone to Denmark to look at the project, and we continue to have those discussions with Nature Energy. They, they continue to be very committed to trying to identify a site in Melrose, and we'll be talking a little bit more about that. Securing the land is, is, well, nothing is really simple sometimes. It involves some, some talking and some swapping and looking, you know, kind of a process of elimination and looking at different areas of town. So we'll keep you up to date on that. I think that in pretty short order, I've talked to Colleen a little bit about this, and I don't, you know, just within the last day or two, that I would very much like to put together a special meeting of the council and MADA to talk about that direction as it relates to potentially future industrial park development and how the Nature Energy project ties in with that. Nature Energy has, has been communicating more with the state of Minnesota. They are out looking at more sites. They're looking down in Painesville. They're looking in Cold Spring. They're, they're looking at quite a few places. So I don't, I don't think this is a project that we want to rush to make any decisions, but at the same time, I think we have to be aware that we have to be very timely and diligent in our responses. So I think we need to set some very specific action or a course of action to either put that to bed or, or ink a deal. So stay tuned for progress on that. Are there any questions about the Nature Energy project?
Yeah, I guess I got one. I didn't know we were doing anything with Nature Energy. I thought we just literally went to a informational site visit in Denmark, and I didn't know that we were actually pursuing anything at this time, spending city resources on it. So anyway, just a comment.
You know, up until this, I mean, Nature Energy came to the city indicating that they were very much interested in a location in Melrose. They identified land, and they, they told us that they are not looking for any financial assistance, they are just looking for a welcome. And it's, there's been some changes in the management, or, you know, who their people on the ground are for how this project is, is rolling out. And I think that it is time for them to come back, and that's the point of the whole joint meeting, is to figure out, you know, what part of this is the responsibility of the city, or how far does the city want to go in trying to attract them? Or is it something that they pursue, you know, outside of city support? But I think we, to your point, Tony, I think we do have to develop some consensus so everybody understands what direction should be taken. So I, staff, and myself both have direction on how to move forward.
Sounds good.
Thank you. City Administrator Report.
So many of you were there earlier today. At 4 o'clock this afternoon, we had a ribbon cutting and a bridge dedication, and then we had a nice little program here at the city center. It was good to see some of the folks that were involved from the beginning on that project in the room, and we got a really good history lesson from Mr. Pashke about why the bridge was named after Mr. Clark. Very interesting and informative. I learned a lot. I didn't know that this actually was where his original house was, so that's kind of neat. And then that project itself is about, I would say it's about 80% substantially completed. There are several punch list items that we're still working through. There is an outstanding cost item that we're kind of going back and forth with the contractor on about some additional paving that happened, so we're still working to resolve that. But the punch list items, I would imagine, we're probably going to not get this project completely closed out until sometime summer of next year, because some of the stuff that has to be done, there's warranties and different things like that, so. But people can drive on it. That's the main thing, and it looks great, so we're very happy about that. If you were actually at that ceremony at 4 o'clock, you may have noticed that they were actually in the park putting in the campsites. So that's another thing that has happened. Craig Cheetah was down there working on that, so that should be done. The road should be in, and the pad should be ready to go this fall. We also have talked about the fact that we had a joint meeting, and so we've had some staffing changes. Doris Riehlend, who has been promoted to the HR Generalist Payroll Clerk position, has taken on that role, and Stephanie Perez has taken on the Receptionist Building Tech position. We have advertised for the Finance Director position, and that will stay open until December 1st. We will also be, we have also advertised for the ambulance coordinator position. That one is an internal advertisement for the people that are on the ambulance, so that's simply an internal posting. It's not an external posting at this time. The, the consensus of the ambulance corps, the group, basically said, you know, we think we have enough interest within the, within the corps, and so I think that they decided, why don't we try it this way first? So that was what we ended up doing. Dr. Bessie resigned as a medical director, and later on in the agenda, we will be talking about who the new medical director is and what has to happen with that. So I believe that's all I have on my report for now.
Any questions?
Just the additional paving. What was the additional paving that was done?
So what happened was, is there was a, right next to MAP, there was a storm sewer. It was like a dip, and we had said, you know what, you're here, fix it, so that we don't have issues with standing water or anything. And we knew, because a lot of times when you're on these big projects, you know, you kind of design on the fly sometimes, and we knew that that was going to be a small cost, which we were fully prepared to pay as a city. That's not a problem. Well, they didn't stop there. Central paving then continued for another 100 and some feet on one side and 200 on the other. We never gave them direction to do that. And so we ended up with this very large dip in the road, so they had to come back and they had to put a very substantial patch in to make it work. So now it's a matter of who's paying for that. So that's what we're arguing about right now.
Because the county didn't know.
The county does not, the county had said, you, you do what's in the project limits, and you just, you know, you do what you're supposed to do. And suddenly, we all come back, and here's this tar way down the road.
Right. So it was County Road, obviously, so I can't, just saying, it's County Road, so.
So.
Probably should be paving County Road for them.
We're, we're working through it. We, we're working through it.
All right. Anything else? Okay. We're on the action items. There's a resolution canvassing the November 8th, 2022 municipal election returns and declaring election results to council to meet as a canvassing board for the city election held on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. The city had 1,738 registered voters at the start of election day. The number of new registrants was 65. So the council is to take action approving the resolution canvassing the election results. Is there any questions?
I will make a motion to approve canvassing results.
As far as, is there?
So I'm going.
Okay. Home favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried. Then the second one is going to be for a resolution number 2022-65, resolution approving case number 922, 2022-401, conditional use permit requested by QuickTrip, allowed construction of a new facility.
At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, which was held on October 31st, the commission held a public hearing at the request of QuickTrip for construction of a convenience grocery store that is operated in conjunction with a motor fuel facility. This is in accordance with Section 222.04 subdivision 5 of our zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission recommended to the council that the conditional use permit be approved. My planning report is attached. I'm just going to go over a couple of the criteria. We also welcome Dean George here tonight from QuickTrip, in case you have any questions about the project. He is, he also attended the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, so we are glad to have him here. QuickTrip is purchasing the former US Bank property and is proposing to build a 9,200 square foot convenience store with 10 dispenser main fuel canopy, as well as a two-lane diesel fuel. They desired an access right in only off of County Road 13. Since the planning and zoning meeting, we have gotten confirmation that, from MinDOT, that this will be an allowed access off of 13. This will be a 24-hour-a-day operation with products sold similar to those at their other stores. We have received a full set of plans from them. They are available anytime anyone would like to see them. They are anticipating employing 25 to 30 new permanent jobs in the city with a projected payroll estimate of a half, or $500,000 annually. This area is Zone C2, commercial highway, so pursuant to our zoning ordinance, it is an allowed use by conditional use. We've got basically eight criteria under this subsection. I don't think I should go through it all and read, but we have confirmed that the canopies are appropriate, the diesel pumps are where they should be. They do not, their closest adjacent residential property is the Nathie property, and so they are 350 feet from any residential district. They are almost 400. They are almost 40 feet from Burger King. And so, we have confirmed all the criteria of the conditional use permit. Uh, there is a resolution attached that goes through that. The only things that I want to add about this and their sort of new development since then, I already discussed the right in only. I have confirmed with Mike Decker that I believe a traffic study will occur starting next week, weather permitting. We're going to do a traffic study on the intersection, um, of Craft Drive and 13 because as you know, that's already a challenging intersection and it's a county road, so it's up to the county. But they're going to do a study on the traffic patterns in that area to see if anything is going to be needed. Uh, the questions that I have received from the public on it are that intersection. So, people know the inner, the two access points will be off of 13. Their other access off of Craft Drive will be where the current drive-through is for the bank property. That other intersection closest to the Craft 13 intersection will be closed. So, as you're looking at it, that other intersection that most people are used to is where the stormwater pond is. There will only be one entrance off of Craft Drive and that is the one closest. So, these field pumps over on this side, the 10 field pumps on the Burger King side, actually are very close to where the, to the drive-through lane of the former bank property is. And so, that's one of the main questions people have had. I believe, and, uh, Dean can answer any questions. The last hurdle is the wetlands, correct?
Correct.
And there, you have a final hearing, I believe, with Stearns County at the end of December?
Wednesday.
So, are there any questions for Mr. George or myself?
There's only one observation on that Craft Drive and County 13 corner. How you come off 13 and take kind of a, it's more than a 90. I know they tried to address the turn radius there for semis back when we did Craft Drive a number of years ago, but it's still not, it's still, the turn radius isn't wide enough yet for trucks to make it without going way out on, turning onto Craft Drive. Does that make sense? They still need to make a wide turn there, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just an observation being there's, can be some work done in that corner right now if anybody wants to take a look at that again, but.
And, and I believe, Mr. George, that's one of the main reasons you wanted that right hand in because you're anticipating that the, uh, truck traffic off of the interstate are going to come in off of that approach.
Right. Yeah. I'm, I'm, it's just a general observation for all the truck, because we get so much, so many trucks that turn on Craft Drive. And if we add that much more exit traffic with QuickTrip and trucks are making wide turns there, that it might create some more issues.
That's partially why the traffics, that's partially why they're doing the traffic study too.
Well, they won't look at that. They're just looking at numbers for traffic study. But I would, I would observe the trucks turning onto Craft Drive for all the, you know, all the traffic that's.
Well, that actually will be part of the traffic study. So, they'll know, they'll break it down by cars, trucks.
But basically, what you want to know is we have to widen, widen it out a little bit more.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is just take a look at the turn radius and.
Or they make a turn, make a turn like they just stood up here.
Yeah, exactly. Right.
Yep.
So.
Yep. I know what you mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just like a turn it on to the new bridge, you know?
Yeah, where they widen.
Yep. Where we made it wider even at the last minute, you know, might have to make it.
Right.
Right. That might interfere with the holding pond there a little bit, maybe not. I don't know.
Yeah. Uh, is there, is there any questions, anything else? Okay. Then, uh, resolution number 2022-65, resolution approving, uh, the case number nine, 2022-401. Can I get a motion to approve this continue, uh, conditional use permit?
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Home Affairs say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
All right. Then, uh, resolution number 2022-66, resolution approving case number 10-2022-100 variance requested by Riverside Development Group LLC for off-street parking under section 501.01. Is there any?
Okay. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held on October 31st, they also had a public hearing at the request of Riverside Development Group LLC for a variance for off-street parking under section 501.01 of the zoning ordinance. Um, again, you have my planning report, but I'm just going to hit some highlights. As Tracy mentioned, Riverside Development Group is proposing a 29-unit apartment building consisting of 18 two-bedroom units and 11 one-bedroom unit in addition to about 5,100 square feet of commercial space on the first floor. Uh, this area is Zone Z5, C5, commercial residential downtown. And per our zoning ordinance, this is an allowed use. It does not require a conditional use permit. But regarding the parking, how our zoning ordinance states is that you need a parking spot for every bedroom. And so, when we made the calculations with the multifamily and with the commercial space, it required 73 off-street parking spaces. When they originally made the plans, they completely fulfilled the obligation of 73 parking spaces, but that took out the sidewalk because the sidewalk is technically on that lot and on that property. And so, in consultation with city staff, we really want to keep the sidewalk because now with the new bridge project and access to the park, that sidewalk is important. So, they were, the developer went back, redid their designs, changed the parking layout a little bit. So, instead of going perpendicular, went diagonal parking there along the front in order to retain the sidewalk. But in doing that, we lost eight spots. There was consideration of purchasing this lot and putting a few spots over there, but that would disrupt the green space that we just created for the dam project. There's also, there was also some talk of putting a few additional spots tucked in closest to the building, but that really narrows up the area. Neither of those solutions would have completely resolved. They would have needed a variance anyway. And so, the eight parking spots is where we landed in terms of being short. The thing to keep in mind is we don't know who the retail stores will be leased to yet. So, we don't know what kind of demand for parking, whether those are going to be offices, you know, requiring just a few spots or whether or not it's going to be a more of a restaurant-type facility. So, we don't know what the demand for those commercial spots are going to be. Um, Mr. Goman is here if you have any questions for him about the property. But it was the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the variance.
Is there any questions?
Just an observation, we already have parking issues in town. All right. Parking's tight already. Although we did just create a number of spots on with the new bridge. But I'd be curious to find out, you know, because I know this winter, we had a bunch of problems with three-hour parking limits and it was a big issue. And it's taken a lot of the law enforcement's time to patrol that because there's a lot of complaints with parking. So, it's an observation that we have parking issues in town and this will not make it better. So, most likely.
But also, we started like rent out parking spots for, uh, the travel company at the end of our lot here.
Over here.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's.
Options.
There, there, there's eight vehicles parked there right now and they've been there since last Friday or Thursday. I mean, if people want to exercise and walk a little bit, they can find some parking spots too.
Well, we did create, um, with the addition of what we did with the bridge, we ended up with, is it 12 more on the street?
Right.
So, the, if the people were to park on the street, I guess, are, are you like leaving some of those stalls in front of the commercial, open for commercial only? Like having signs out there that say, you know, no tenant parking, but the commercial can use that?
So, we, we have enough underground parking for, you know, the, you know, one parking spot plus for every apartment unit.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, and that's going to be the, the primary, you know, people for parking down there and, and, you know, and the parking, the surface parking lot will be, you know, additional occupants in those units plus the, the tenants, the retail tenant space.
So, I mean, just going off Tony's thing, like we're, we were fighting, having a problem with plowing snow and stuff like that there parked on the street. So, and we were putting signage up, three-hour parking and stuff like that. So, that's why I was just wondering if this variance, then all of a sudden, we're going to have tenants or you guys would have tenants parking on the street and then we end up with that problem.
Well, I, I.
And I mean, I guess they could yet, but if they have the space for themselves.
You know, the, the retail side of it is probably the, the heavier demand and whatever, you know, it'll, it'll happen. And we don't have, you, uh, a space set up for like a commercial hood system, duct, you know, grease duct exhaust and all the rest of that because of the design of the building and everything else. So, you know, we could end up with a coffee shop or an ice cream shop or something like that, but not, you know, heavy sit-down dining, um, requirements so that, you know, will limit some of the parking needs there as well. We, we don't have the infrastructure built into the building per se for that.
Yep. Okay. No, I was just checking because I mean, if that was in there, then we, you know, then we would be more opt to having people that were going to be parking overnight on the street.
Right.
Where maybe it won't be like that because of.
Where the PD comes in, but yeah. So, if I could ask, what is, what do you see with apartment to car ratio? I mean, is it basically one car per apartment or do you typically see the two bedrooms with two cars or what's your average?
No, I mean, it, it, it's all over the board. It's hard to exactly say. Um, you have a requirement that's one parking spot per bedroom, which is actually a little higher requirement for parking than a lot of municipalities have. And so, um, you know, it's, you know, so, so like you said, I mean, that's, that's a higher requirement already than, than a lot of municipalities have in the ordinance. So, that's, you know.
Right.
Part of it too. But we, yeah, I guess I, it's, you will have two bedrooms with one person in them and we'll have one bedrooms with two people in them. So, it's.
Yeah. It may become an issue anyway. Okay.
All right. I'm looking for a motion to approve the variance.
I'll make that motion.
First, a second. Home Affairs say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution number 2022-68, uh, resolution approving a business subsidy and development agreement between the city of Melrose and Riverside Development Group LLC connection with the redevelopment of the former Craft Site. Anybody want to talk or can we get a motion to approve?
Well, I got, the developers agreement. I, did Scott, did you review the developers agreement at all for any thing?
I did not.
Okay.
Do you want to go up to the.
Christopher, with the prior grant, with your bond council review.
Okay. My, my only concern is that, I just want to make sure and I, I looked at it, it looks like the city is protected from anything because there, you know, obviously there's risks involved on the craft lot and stuff. So, I just want to make sure that we are financially protected, that everybody's aware of all the potential hazards in this project and that we are, the city won't be held liable for, for.
Yeah. I, I think that's the, um, you know, that was the change we made that, that there's the potential if we run into something that's unknown at this time, that we can extend the, the TIF in terms of a timeframe in order to cover those. So, it's kind of a win-win situation for I think us as a developer, you know, to give me enough comfort level that there would be some way to do some funding for that. Um, because obviously, I, we don't want to purchase, you know, you know, something that, that we know could be an issue and it gives the city a way to work with us in order to finance that long-term that, that keeps it.
Right. And you're, and you're comfortable with the shoreline risks of any agencies that might comment on whatever the EAW or whatever.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's something.
As long as you're comfortable with those risks.
And we did consult with Scott directly. We've all consulted a great deal on that.
All right. Okay.
And then the additional assistance, should there be further environmental concerns? It is limited to tax increments, not the general points of assistance.
Right. And the, the, the extended TIF is related to the potential hazards found in the ground, right?
Right.
Okay. Because it was a, there's some waste contamination of the soils, I guess.
Hopefully, that's all done.
Hopefully, that's done.
Yeah, we were.
Somebody dig deep in there, so.
Right.
Can I get a motion to approve that? First, can I get a second? Okay. Home Affairs say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. The council to give consideration approving the deferred loan agreement. Is there anything else you guys need to ask?
I guess, why are we, why are we charging 275 for the lot and then basically giving them the money back? Why not just sell the lot for a dollar? I'm, just a, just a question. Go ahead.
Because this is a redevelopment tax increment financing district and you are limited in what expenses you can reimburse. Basically, with the redevelopment district, you can only reimburse site, you know, the cost to, to assemble the land and anything that caused the property to be a redevelopment district in the first place. So, by, by selling the land for 275, we create an eligible expense, uh, to reimburse with improvement. So, that's the reason. And there is, you know, should, it gives the city one more kind of lever, if you will, that if they don't meet the terms of the development agreement, you know, owning up where you're managing the way the city wants.
Oh, I see. Still get the 275.
The city gets rebate.
Oh, yeah. Okay. All right. But we want the land back. Right. Okay.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Home Affairs say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much, sir. Okay. Then, uh, we're on to F, Granite City Real Estate Partners Terms Letter.
Got a lot of things going on here. This is good. So, we are, we have made progress. Matta actually met and reviewed this terms letter and is making recommendation that the council move forward with this. Um, we are entering this terms letter. It is like the, the precursor to the, uh, actual drafting of a development agreement so that in order to, uh, have a certain understanding for the developers to move forward, start investing money and, uh, get out surveys and, and engineering and architecture and those types of things, they want to know where they stand. Uh, and it provides the city with some assurances of what the project will be. So, this is the, uh, a proposed 72-unit multifamily project, um, that is proposed to occur on Railroad Avenue West, the Tyler property. It would be the property furthest on the west end of this property. Now, the property is currently planted, um, we're, we're talking about outlots, but a final legal description will have to be put together that will split out approximately five, four and a half to five acres is what they're looking at. Um, the way that we had kind of preliminarily identified the property and the housing strategy and as we've discussed it in the past, there's about 7.4 acres that would be available for multifamily. So, again, we want to reach, you know, come to agreement on the basic terms of how this project would work, what kind of assistance would be done, what project would be built. Uh, and then the city has, uh, I think, believe you have already authorized, uh, the planning work to begin. Correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, you're, you're authorizing the plating to begin once, uh, once you've received some escrow dollars. Uh, so, we'll have to split out exactly what the property is before, uh, before we have that legal description. So, the terms of this project is, uh, the developer shall be Granite City Real Estate Partners LLC, um, which may, this may be assigned. They will likely form a single-purpose LLC, um, that would be the actual owner-operator. Uh, the development property shall be, and we've identified it as outlots A, C, and D, which are basically the large wetland area. I didn't see a reason to retain ownership of a large wetland area that the city needs to deal with. And then the two outlots, uh, larger outlots on the, on, that are currently planted. It does preserve Outlet B, which is a storm drainage, has been identified for storm drainage. The project would consist of 72 units. I am not certain if your packets got that corrected. It was two buildings at 36. Um, this will likely, as the discussions evolve, it's looking to be a single building with 72 units. The developer would purchase the development property from Matta for 16,200 per acre, um, for the developable lots, uh, plus the allocated public improvement costs, which are currently estimated to be 65,000 per acre. uh, plus the allocated public improvement costs, which are currently estimated to be 65,000 per acre. Eighty percent of the total improvement, land improvement costs is proposed to be paid in cash. The balance would be covered through, uh, would be upfronted by the city and reimbursed with the 10% of the increment retained, uh, generated by the project. Um, construction is proposed to start by June 1 of 2023, be substantially completed by June of 2024. The developer, uh, has selected the 2050 TIF housing rule. This would be a TIF, a Housing Tax Increment Financing District. When you provide assistance to multifamily projects, they need to, uh, select the 2050 rule or the 4060 rule, which is 20% of the units have to be occupied by people at or below 50% of the county median, or the 4060, where 40% of the units need to be rented to people at 60% of the median. The developers have chosen, uh, the 2050 rule. The developer will work with the city, planning commission, and park board to address parking, garages, play area, and trail access for project tenants. Developer shall deposit $30,000 in escrow with the city to reimburse the city for costs associated with legal consulting, um, and cost to prepare the development agreement and other professional fees. The developer will be required to place a deposit with the Melrose Public Utility Commission on any electrical transformers that are ordered specifically to serve the project. That's something, that's a conversation that we have regularly, regularly been having with Roger because of the, you know, the long lead time on transformers and, and the cost of them. If this is a specialty transformer, um, they'll need to, to get with Roger and identify what, what that deposit may need to be. Uh, developers shall provide a site plan to the city not later than December 15 of 2022. The reason for that is that we're going to need to have an idea for the preliminary plat. Um, we're, we're going to have to have an idea for the legal description and selling the property. Um, and equally, if not, more important is Dave needs to know where he's running utilities to because the coordination of, um, Dave Blummel putting together the plans and specs for the public improvements to serve the project are going to be critical in order to meet the construction deadline. So the idea is that we, if we have the site plan by December 15, Dave will be able to do plans and specs and have them ready to go in, you know, in time for a decent bidding environment, um, so that we can get them bid and then take the final step towards financial feasibility and awarding that if it makes sense, or when it makes sense. I'm gonna stay optimistic. Um, and hope that things would just get better every day with pricing and contractors. Um, developer will submit a sworn construction statement documenting their project costs in a taxing, in a Housing Tax Increment Financing District. Um, for a multifamily project, every expense associated with the project is eligible for reimbursement. So when you see that big number on a TIF note saying up to 12 million, 12 million dollars, 255,680 dollars, that is the estimated project cost at this point. That number has changed a little bit since we initially put that in there. Um, that, uh, that does not mean you'll be reimbursing that much. That's just the maximum eligible. Uh, the developer agrees not to challenge its assessed valuation for the duration of the contract, and the developer will indemnify the city, uh, for the project. The city then would be responsible for processing building permits, um, facilitating or proceeding with the replating of the property so that it may be split and legal descriptions generated for the sale of the property. Um, we will sell the development property per the terms already identified. We'll authorize the preparation of plans and specs for Railroad Avenue Public Improvements to include street sewer water, stormwater pond over the 2022, 2023 winter with plans to bid the project in the spring and commence improvements, uh, upon receipt of acceptable bids as soon as weather allows in the spring. There's going to be a lot more discussion about this. I mean, you know, we're saying this is everything we're gonna do. There's all kinds of contingencies built in and review opportunities as we proceed. Uh, we will seek to coordinate the public improvements with the developer. If there's excavation being done on the road, uh, and excavation needs to be done on the site, we'll do what we can to help facilitate, facilitate some cooperation. Uh, the city will not award bids for the projects until the developer has executed the purchase agreement and the TIF development agreement. And in exchange for the covenants above, the city will create a Housing Tax Increment Financing District that will provide a total of 2.348 million dollars in assistance, pay-as-you-go assistance, um, based upon the estimated assessor's market value of 5.5 million dollars per 36-unit structure. Terms of the pay-as-you-go note would be that it would be issued on or about June 1 of 2024. You usually don't issue the TIF note till the project is complete, you know, the final costs. Uh, the note shall not exceed that 2.3, uh, unless, again, our tax increment financing projections are adjusted. And again, we're gonna, you're going to be asked later on in the council meeting to consider calling for the public hearing to initiate that process. And the numbers in the, the TIF plan, TIF projections, uh, may affect what's written in this, in the terms. But the, the deal will conceptually remain the same, that it's pay-as-you-go, um, for a period of 15 years. Again, uh, pay-as-you-go assistance would be provided at 90% of the increments, um, for a maximum term of 15 years. Uh, first payment date, you know, based upon when increments are available. Uh, interest rate has been established at 6.25. Uh, again, we're basically setting that interest rate at the cost of, of money for the developers because we're paying for it over time as opposed to upfront. The note is a special and limited obligation of the city, and tax increments are the only thing that will be used to pay that note. And the developer will not assign its interest in the project in whole or in part without the prior written approval of the city. Those are the basic terms. These are preliminary, but I think in order to move forward or for the developers to have some assurances of what, uh, is being proposed, uh, preliminary terms letter made sense in this case.
What has been talked about for road going there? Like, is, is this exiting, like, the property where the apartment's gonna be built? Are they all the way, like, they have to take responsibility up to, what do we call it, Lovers Lane? I don't know what that.
No.
Riverside or River.
Side, the divide road.
And then, I mean, it's obviously gravel once you hit those houses. I mean, we're, are we tarring this all right away? Or what does MATA and everybody talk about on this?
So explain to him why.
Yep. Based on, I mean, this was all addressed in the housing strategy when we had preliminary designs laid out. So the proposed replat of the property includes two cul-de-sacs, you know, as, right after, uh, the existing development. And then the multifamily would occur at the end of that road. So public improvements are proposed to only go to the point where the development has access to the multifamily project. It's a, it's an expensive project. Uh, we talked about how difficult it is to assess because we can't assess anything to the north half of the road. And that's actually one of the reasons why the multifamily project makes most, the most sense. It's, you know, it, it's almost counterintuitive. Well, you should develop the cul-de-sacs first, you know, so you don't have to build as much road. But the idea here is intentional, that we look at building the multifamily project because it will generate a significant amount of increment that will help to facilitate, help to pay for improvements. The land sale will help pay for some of those improvements. So if, again, you may or may not recall that the strategy or the structure that we talked about when we did the capital improvement planning, that we would be relying upon, uh, capital improvement, um, fund dollars of about just over a half million dollars, that there are some American Recovery Act fund dollars. So we're trying to plug those holes so that, it seems crazy to, to, to pave it entirely, but it also will put us in a position where developing the single-family housing will be easier to do if we've got that road improved. So long answer to short question. Yep, we're talking about paving it all the way to the entrance of the apartments.
Do we have any idea what that cost is gonna be as far as the infrastructure in today's dollars?
Do we what? I'm sorry?
Do we have any idea what the cost to, to, uh, do the infrastructure out to that point is in?
Approximately 1.8 million dollars.
Okay. And how much of that do we need to come up with that we think in our normal budget?
Well, again, it was completely, I mean, it was completely addressed, I mean, based in the capital improvement plan with, um, between land sale, land sales, capital improvement dollars, the, the ARPA funds, the city will be carrying a portion of that cost until their additional assessments can be collected. Um, I don't have those numbers. I wasn't planning on doing that tonight, Tony, but, um, I can certainly.
I wouldn't expect you to. I mean, to get, maybe gather some, some information. And then, you know, when we have our budgeting, we look at all this and we look at it ourselves rather than just listening all the time. And we need to think about this, right? We need to look at the numbers. We need to see if we can afford it and what, what it's gonna cause us to do in the future. Are we gonna have to float a bond or not? You know, that's, that's, those are the questions that we need to think about.
And also the 1.8, that is including the water, wastewater, electrical.
It does not include electrical. It's water, sewer, stormwater, street, curb, and gutter.
So some of that is gonna be on the utility side.
Yeah, right. There's more expense on the utility side, right? So those are, I mean, it all sounds great. I mean, it's great to get a big development and everything, but we still need to slow down and look at what is this costing? And what's it gonna do to our budget? Is it gonna blow it up or what's gonna happen? You know, 'cause that's why we're here, to look at, you know, looking up for the taxpayers. We're not just always going forward to do.
Well, and that going forward is what I was just leading up to is, you know, Jennio built out of town, and then all of a sudden, we needed to get a sidewalk out there. So like, I mean, are all these things like, hey, we get that out there, and now we gotta do a sidewalk right away? Where all of a sudden, it's extra money? I mean, I don't know what, what is it if you guys build it out there? I mean, is it, I mean, it's nice to actually have sidewalks so people can walk from there, but.
All right.
We will get one, a connector over to the Lake Wobegon Trail.
Okay.
Yeah. That's part of.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
But we're not building it all the way in the town. You know what I mean? Like, we get them access to the Wobegon Trail, that's.
Yeah.
And you know, these are all the things that, that still need to be fine-tuned. You know, again, I wouldn't be standing before you suggesting that this was financially feasible had we not already spent some time looking at the city's capital improvement plan and figuring out how that all comes together. Um, same thing with, you know, I, I think sidewalks and how the people access, you know, how people utilize the street sidewalks, very important issue. But until the project is designed, and, you know, again, in the terms letter, it says, they'll work with planning commission to make sure that a connection to the trail and parks and those kinds of. So there's a lot of things that need to be worked out. Um, but I think it has passed the initial test of, do we have the ability to put this together? At this point, we do. We're, you know, but will this, will things change? We don't know what bids are gonna come in at. Uh, the developers don't know what construction costs will finally be. All of us are just agreeing to move forward in our due diligence at this point tonight. We're not approving assistance. We are laying the groundwork so that they've got some assurances that they can move forward, and we can move forward as well.
Right. And I guess I was just making more assurance on the city's side is that if the apartment gets built, not so all of a sudden they come in and say, wow, you guys, we gotta tar this. Like, are we held, if, if the tarring doesn't happen all to that spot instantly because we don't have the money right away?
Right. Changes everything.
Are they fine with holding off, you know, are they fine with us holding off a year? Or something like that. I mean, hopefully, it doesn't happen that way, but, I mean, that's why I'm just wondering. So if we approve this, are we gonna be like, okay, guys, we gotta have tar there next week, or, you know?
Well, and again, you notice in the terms letter that it says contingent upon receipt of acceptable bids. So I think that there are, there are contingencies. I think this provides enough of a level of comfort for the developers to move forward with their due diligence. And then we will need to move forward with our due diligence. But these are all good points, and they have to be addressed, you know, I's dotted and T's pressed by the time we get to final approval.
Okay.
Council to consider approving the, uh, term letter with Granite City Real Estate Partners. Make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Home favorites say aye. Right. Opposed? Motion carried.
If I could just say, I would just, I would like to see some numbers as far as, I mean, we got our budget meeting coming up, but something specifically addressing this in our budget meeting at some point, so, okay. Thanks.
Can you flip these as long as Tracy's here? Let's go to 7H and then go back to 7G.
Okay. Yeah, we'll go to 7G then. Okay, resolution number 2022-69, a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed creation of a Tax Increment Financing District number 13-1 within the development district number 13, proposed adoption of a Tax Increment Financing Plan relating to, um, GC Partners projects and other housing development opportunities.
I, I tried to make it longer for you, Joe, but I just couldn't squeak in any more words. Uh, so this is a resolution that is simply calling for the public, public hearing to create the Tax Increment Financing District. Um, so between now and the time of the public hearing, we'll be doing, you know, more financial due diligence. And, and I would hope that by the date of this meeting, we would have the final development agreement put together. Um, not certain how hard we're gonna have to push Dave to get plans and specs and bids, but, you know, that'll be, be, be feathered into this. Um, the reason that we are calling for it tonight is again to demonstrate, um, some support of moving forward with this project so the developers can feel comfortable moving forward. And the reason that I have set the public hearing for February rather than January is that housing TIF districts do require an extra step in reaching out to your county commissioner. Um, that's another 30 days that's added to the process. And I just think we will all be further along, and it will not mess with your holiday, uh, notifications will not be conflicting with holidays and breaks and people not being available to receive the notices. So it made sense to call for it tonight, but set it for your regular council meeting on February 16.
Can you get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Home favorites say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, back to G. Uh, council to give consideration approving resolution number 2022-67, authorize an application for this Minnesota State Act of Transportation Infrastructure Grant. Sheila?
On October 28th, we were notified that based on our letter of intent, which we submitted to MINDOT for an Act of Transportation Infrastructure Grant, we met program eligibility requirements, and it was recommended by MINDOT that we submit a full application, which we are currently developing. As part of that grant application, a supporting resolution by the city council is required. Just as a reminder, this grant application is for a sidewalk from Fifth Avenue East to 11th Avenue East connecting Daylight Court and the potential 168 Riverfront Housing Development to the Sauk River Park. It is included in our 2023 Capital Improvement Plan with other financing, but a grant is always better. And it's also included in the city's comprehensive plan as well as the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. Just some updates, since Jody from the county was here before, I checked, and the county has passed their supporting resolution. They will be our project sponsor for this because we are a small city. Um, at the end of the month, the school district is gonna consider passing a supporting resolution because some of the sidewalk runs on their property. So we need a supporting resolution from the school district as well.
Okay. Any questions?
Um, do we, did we ever have a final quote on what that?
Yes, I worked with Dave on the quote. Um, if we do asphalt, it's 360,000. And so that is the total amount that we will submit for. They will, they will pay all construction costs, any administrative costs the grant won't pay for. And so I've been working with Dave on those numbers.
All right. Can you get a motion to approve?
Slow move. Second.
Home favorites say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. It's gonna be 2023 Railroad West Improvement Supplemental Letter Agreement.
Questions?
Yeah, it is.
If you wanna, go ahead and get up there and see what this is.
This is the agreement for the design of the, um, improvements for Railroad West that we just discussed with the, with the developer here. Uh, this is the agreement for the design of the railroad improvements of the existing gravel, the extension of the utilities from the endpoint where they are now to the entrance of the multifamily development, and for the stormwater for the entire area. It's the design, and it actually has a construction administration in it as well. So this is the full, full engineering for the project.
So this is saying we are going forward with engineering work? Is that?
You're approving the proposal. We wouldn't green light it until the budget and everything was finalized. Like, you guys are in a position to do that.
Yeah, it'll save us a couple of weeks rather than, uh, waiting for the December council meeting if we can approve it now contingent on the.
We're not going forward with it. We're not starting design tomorrow.
I, no. I, I should, but I won't.
I'll make a motion to approve that contingent upon the budget.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Then SEHS submitted proposals for engineering services for 2023 street improvement projects. Anything you guys?
Do you want to remind them what streets we're doing?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is Mustang Lane. We took this on our, our traveling tour of the community here. Mustang Lane and Seventh Street Northeast up there, both of those in poor condition. So those are pavement rehab primarily. Seventh will be a little more involved than, than Mustang. Mustang, the subgrade is good. Seventh, not so much. So it'll be a little, a little bit of a, a little more intensive project on Seventh. And then also reconstruction of Fourth Street Southeast for those three blocks over there and Fourth Avenue Southeast as well for one block. That one includes sanitary sewer and street and rather, we'll reconstruct on that one. This is for design and construction administration as well.
All right. Any questions?
That's the plan, yes. And again, we'll wait on this until the budget meeting gives us the thumbs up that it's all included. These costs were included in the estimates.
Can you get a motion to approve?
Slow move.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Medical director for the ambulance department?
Yep. So Dr. Bestie has resigned as the medical director. In order for us to proceed as an ambulance, you have to have a medical director on board. And so we had met, John and myself had met with the core and there is a medical director out of the Centra Care, Centra Care, as part of Centra Care. He does medical director for several different area ambulances and he's agreed to be that person for our local ambulance. His name is Dr. Dennison Gillen. So he's agreed to fulfill that role. He is currently an emergency room trauma doctor at the St. Cloud Hospital and also serves as, as I said, the medical director for several area ambulance services. Many of the core knew him. There was, this was given out to the local medical team and they, there was not an interest expressed by anyone. So they were willing to take this on. So staff, so Centra Care through their wider network was willing to take this on. So staff recommends the appointment of Dr. Dennison Gillen as the Melrose Ambulance Medical Director.
Okay, motion to approve?
Motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion is carried. Ryan Consulting, contract revision?
Yep. So obviously, based on all the stuff that Tracy had to present on tonight, we've been utilizing her services to a great degree. You know, Tracy's been doing economic development services for the cities probably are for Melrose, gosh, from the mid 2000s or, yeah. So of course, due to a number of factors, Ms. Ryan's billable rate beginning in July really should have been the same as January through June of '22 and that was 4,500 based on the amount of work that she's doing, including many of the things that she talked about tonight as far as the strategic housing plan. She's been critical to the negotiations with developers and putting our deals together. Rather than reduce Ms. Ryan's rate to 3,000, that was part of the addendum as attached. The goal is to reassign the work being done to specific projects rather than charging 100% to MATA and continue with the rate at $4,500 to really cover the workload that Ms. Ryan is completing for the city. It's not advisable that we really reduce that at this time. We don't have anybody internally that can really step in and take that over. Certainly I, as your city administrator, could, but given where we're at with everything else, I'm not sure that's really the role you want me to serve at this point. And quite frankly, we still need Tracy to work with us on all the TIF stuff. So my recommendation is that we amend Ms. Ryan's contract to be 4,500 per month, starting in July '22 through December 31st, 2022, and then 3,000 per month beginning January 2023 through December 31st, 2023, with the statement that we will review the contract honor before July 1st, 2023, to see if any changes need to be made to the contract. Because then we'll start charging off some of the other stuff for TIF projects in admin. Does that make sense?
So, and then going, going forward, what's our, what's our ultimate goal? Because I mean, we were talking when we got a city planner that we were going to back off with Tracy, I guess, unless we need it, you know, as a need basis.
Well, and right now, I think our need is pretty great as far as housing and everything we're doing. Tracy's kind of in the middle of a lot of projects. We have to be careful because we've kind of run into this situation when, we have to be careful based on the job descriptions that we have to make sure that our folks are doing what their job roles are. So yes, once we kind of get through this, as your administrator, certainly I can take on economic development. However, that's not feasible nor is it makes sense right now. And especially given the fact that we may, especially given the fact that we don't know what's going to happen a month from now relative to finance director position. So I think that Tracy has become an invaluable part of our team and we need to keep going on that. But that is why I put that in there in July, you know, to reevaluate that and see where we're at. Maybe by then, most of the stuff's kind of settled down. We're on a great roll and, you know, we can kind of put our energies other places.
Because how, how, how does that work for you, Tracy? I mean, you obviously work for other places too. Do, do you do that where it's on an as need basis? I mean, we have a city planner. So I mean, that, that's what we were hired, hiring her for was to work on land negotiation and things like that too.
It's a straight planner position.
It's a planner position.
But if you're planning for the city, you're kind of going all in looking for land to energy.
No. As the economic developer, that would be, that's my role.
Is this position, what, we, we originally did the Ryan Consulting because we didn't have somebody in that position, right? I mean, this contract?
No, it was for economic development. It was not for planning. I did the planning in the 18 months when we didn't have a planner. Sheila's doing a phenomenal job for us, but her role, and again, this is where we go back.
Is it something that she could pick up? Or if she wanted to? I mean, just asking?
I don't know. That's something we'll have to look at. But right now, she's very, very busy with planning and with grant writing. Those are two of the areas that she's doing an exemplary job on and we want to keep her on that because we need somebody doing that.
Okay. I don't know if, you know, maybe she'd be interested in that stuff. You never know.
Down the road.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, like I said, we got to keep moving forward, I guess, with what we have now. But I, I was just kind of wondering because I, I know we talked about this before and it was like.
Shouldn't, shouldn't the planner be part of all this though? City planner? I mean, everything that's going on, should the planner be?
Well, the planner is a huge part of it. Sheila's very much involved in everything we do related to this. But Sheila isn't going to be doing the tax increment financing stuff. That's not what Sheila's, yeah, she's very involved. Anytime we work with developers, she's very involved.
Well, that's just why I want to make sure going forward is that we're making sure that, you know, if we're talking to a developer or whatever, that we have her involved, you know, just, she's the planner too. So I mean, if we're planning on building on something, the planner should be involved.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, she is.
I would just say that there's a, there's a line between when it becomes planning and if there's, there's discussions and negotiations and those kinds of things. And once the planning issue comes up, she's absolutely, or the planner should absolutely be involved. But there's sometimes when just discussions with developers or confidential discussions with developers, they're kind of big picture thinking. You know, so I mean, there's a line, but absolutely everybody would be all.
Yeah, Sheila's been at the table every, or our planners, I've been at the table anytime we're starting this stuff.
Well, I just want to make sure because I mean.
Because we're a three-legged or four-legged stool. We have to do it that way.
So in the past, as like from the beginning, Tracy, like when, when there hasn't been as much action like housing and different things, then did you, did you do work based on what the council requested? Is that kind of how, instead of?
You know, I mean, oh, through the years, like back to 2005, 2006, it was always on a hourly basis. But once we got into doing, I have to go back to what the actual, the contract that preceded the whole housing strategy, the housing strategy was, I mean, I was contracting with you at $25 a month and I was putting in $25 a week. So you were, you were not paying me an hourly rate based on, based on the amount of work that I'm doing. And that's why it jumped up to 4,500. If I billed you hourly, it would be more. So, but it started us hourly, went to 4,500 when we were just full on in the middle of the housing strategy and convinced now projects are coming together and there's development projects. I think if things slow down, if we want to or don't, if things slow down, we can absolutely go back to something that is more on an hourly basis so that, you know, you see what kind of time is being put in. But I am putting in well in excess of 45 hours a month.
I was just curious kind of how it operated prior to us filling the position last, like if it was a as needed basis and if, if that's what it was, if that's like what you see it being there.
And I do that, I did to answer your question. I, you know, there are some things that are on some projects, you know, TIF districts or grant applications, different things like that, there's just doing a flat rate. I work with cities where it is just a monthly retainer a month and, you know, like this, $4,500 a month. And there are other places where it is on an hourly basis. So it really, whatever meets the cities' needs the best, I'm absolutely open to that.
So we are backdating. Basically, the contract was for July 1st, '22 to go to $2,000 a month, right?
Yep. So we're backdating to 4,500 starting from July 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022 for 4,500. That was a miss on my part. I'll fully admit it.
That's rough to, to, to backdate a contract. We have, we have a contract in place, right?
And that was requested for finance when we were, got the invoice. Requested, I think it was going to be at that point, we were going to pay the invoice as presented, that the contract reflected that, so that I wasn't paying above what had been approved.
Right. Oh, so yeah, because now it's been, oh, invoice now.
Right.
And I can't get paid because it's not approved.
Essentially like a change order as we would on a different project. So that's why I, if it was going to be approved to that, that it was backdated.
So that's why you had in your approximately, it could be, I mean, if she was charging us hourly, we were going to pay that. So.
Oh. 25 hours a month? Possibly up to?
Approximately $25 a month, or 25 hours a month.
25 hours a month, yeah.
But that's like she said, to Tracy's point, she's put a lot more than that into there. So, but we felt comfortable with going 4,500 July through December and then looking at 3,000 beginning in January with the idea that we would evaluate it again.
Okay.
All right. Can you get a motion to approve, please?
Well, I'll make that motion. I just, like I said, I just want to make sure that everybody in the office is all staying in the loop. So if I go in and ask questions or something that like, I don't know, what's going on, you know, like, now everybody's, if we're going to do the tripod thing, we all are part of that. So.
You know, there, there are certain things like, you know, negotiations that I don't hear.
Not everybody should be in. No. There are certain things that are confidential that only I should be involved in. There are certain things that not everyone's going to be involved in. We're very good about being team orientated, but if you're saying every time we take a call or we're dealing with a very confidential issue, I think as the administrator, it's really my responsibility to make sure that the team that we put to whatever project this is, is the best team. Sometimes we pull Dave in, sometimes we pull Tessa in, just depending on what it is, you know, Craig Heck and Gary weigh in if there's traffic issues, whatever. So typically what we do whenever we're dealing with projects is we bring in what makes sense for that project. In this case, especially with housing, the planning is a very integral part of that. And so Sheila's been very much involved in that because of that. So when it comes to zoning and all the things that are related. But when it comes to sort of those in debt, kind of those negotiations and kind of that, that really has to fall to myself or the economic development consultant.
Okay.
Financing these projects, you know, different things we've talked about, these small chapters in the state statutes are long and thick and detailed. And when you reach the point of a project where you're looking at how you're going to pay for it and how people use these tools, you really need someone who's working with them on a regular basis and not from time to time.
Yep.
All right. All right. Can you get a motion to approve?
I made a motion.
Okay. Can you get a second? And all, okay. All in favor, say aye?
Do you have a question?
No, I was trying to figure out where I put something on my stuff.
So we'll be on 7M. So, all right. All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carried. 7M, council member Mark Bunkerhill has submitted his resignation effective November 15th, 2022. The council to give consideration to accept council member Hill's resignation and declare a vacancy. Can you get a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Um, let's see here. Council member appointment? Ah, here, one second. Provide consideration to nominate, is willing to fill council member Hill's vacancy at the December 15th council meeting.
I'll make a motion. Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Welcome to the club.
Take your new seat.
Yeah.
All right. Now we are on old business. Relocate network panels. Do you want to, Tessa? All right. Thank you.
Good evening. As you recall, this was brought to the council and PUC at the September meetings. And at the time, it was requested to be tabled. Council member Claussen requested to come in and take a look at it and try some other options. So he and Eric Denny with Arvig worked conjointly. I set those two up to try some different things and look at those. Per council member Claussen's request, we did get quotes on other options or looking at installing a fan and adding some airflow with that. From Arvig, they had stated that they would not install the fan or do any of that. We would have to do that internally. They will not take care of any retrofitting because it would go against the manufacturer's recommendation. So they were not going to perform that work and requested that, he didn't request a partial move because the switches would still be in the existing cabinet and that's where a lot of the heat would be coming from. The quotes were provided. Tony, do you have anything that you would like to add based upon your review or your discussions?
Yeah. I'll, I'll just throw out there that, you know, I, I did find a fan. I put a smaller fan than probably what should be in there, in there. And then I took one of the vents out and, you know, like I said, it was 103 degrees in there when Eric went in there last time. Well, I checked it three days after that. It was 88.7, 88.2, and 87.9, whatever. So it did make a big difference, but, you know, obviously I, I get it. It's, do, do you piece it together, Jerry rig it? I do it at home myself, but I get it. This is not my own personal network closet. So I see the quote is still for all 58 cables in there to be moved. I, I'm confident you could leave two switches in there, use the existing cable. You could set up a new network closet in the vault and then just add new cables to the vault. Anytime we pulled new cables, just leave what's in that closet, in that closet. But now you have two closets. So I, I get it. You want to move it? I understand. Arvig wants to do. I'm not the city's IT consultant, so I'm not going to push any further. So I understand where you guys come from. It is an issue, the heat right now. So.
Then I'll make a motion up here. Then I'll make a motion if you're on board with that.
No, that's fine.
Okay. So you made a motion or you seconding it?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion is carried. New business, propose 2023 meeting schedules. Was there any concerns with anything?
I don't let you know when we get there.
Yeah. All right.
We are, the one thing I did want to mention is we do want to try and set up that joint meeting. We'll probably want to do that, that Sheila talked about. We're probably going to want to do that sooner than later, so we may, because January 5th meeting's relatively short. Do you think that's too short of a time to get everybody together? So we may be able to do it then. But we'll, stay tuned. We'll keep you posted on that one.
Okay. All right. Administrative staff computer purchase?
Yes, I can touch on this as well. We did have in our 2023 capital budget to replace the computers in the admin office. We've been running into more issues lately. For example, mine kind of blew up last week. The hard drive failed, and so we're having some more issues. So we're looking to authorize for the purchase of those now. We're watching for kind of good sales at year end, and we're looking to buy the, buy those in bulk.
All right. Got any questions or concerns?
Oh.
Okay. So can I give a motion to approve laptop purchase for administrative staff?
Yeah.
Can you get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, then.
We're on to a closed meeting.
We are on to a closed meeting.
Pursuant to...